SJC 13365. Hume Lake Christian Camps, Inc., the Planning Board of Monterey.
Okay, Attorney Brewer, whenever you're ready.
Chief Justice, fellow justices, my name is Donna Brewer and I'm here representing the Planning Board of Monterey. I want to give you a little bit of background. Monterey is a small town in southern Berkshire. It is very close to the Connecticut border and it has at its last census, 2020 census, a thousand people. Hume Lake Christian Camps has about 400 acres in Monterey. In 2019, it filed an application for site plan review and approval for a, an RV trailer park. That application was denied on July 25th, 2019 by the Planning Board. At the outset, I want to note that Monterey has no hostility to or prejudice against Hume's religious beliefs. That's not why we're here. Much of Hume's arguments address the faith of the staff and the attendees. That is not the issue, nor is it the question that the volunteers do valuable work, or that the seasonal staff do valuable work. Rather, the issue is as to the RV park, as I'm paraphrasing from Regis College case, there's a two-pronged test that's going to be applied to this RV park. One, the use must have as its bona fide goal something that can be reasonably described as religiously significant. And two, the religiously significant goal must be the dominant or primary purpose for which the land or the structures will be used.
Now, can I ask you, why do you rely on that one rather than the LaSallete case right now?
Well, I'll get to the LaSallete case, which I think is more of an accessory use case, in the sense that I think the LaSallete case actually helps us. It is not against what the Planning Board's decision is. There's been a lot of talk in the briefs about the maintenance shed and whether the maintenance shed is a religious use. I'd say that goes to the accessory use, but the reason why it's different is that the maintenance shed specifically and directly is holding religious artifacts, the lights for the festival of lights they talk about. But here, the distinction is the volunteers are what are important for the operation of the camp, not where those volunteers are housed. We're talking about an RV camp that they're putting there for housing when there is no finding that this housing, as an RV camp, is necessary for the support of the religious activity.
What if they put the campers in the RV camp?
If they put the campers?
Yeah.
That may not be it either.
Why not?
Because what, you're talking about the use of the property, and the use of the property in that case is housing. They're going to be sleeping there. Maybe they'll be eating there, but they're not having prayer sessions there.
But if dorm in a college, right, a dorm in a college is going to be part of the college, right? We said that the dorm is not protected under Dover. I assume we say it is protected, right?
Well, so in that instance, there is a, in the educational context, we're talking about a full panoply of programs and experiences, and we're talking about-
Overnight camp. I mean, it's a camp where people come for weeks at a time. They need to sleep and, you know, they need enough places to sleep, and they need to both sleep their staff and sleep their kids, right? So I just don't, I followed the judge's reasoning all the way up until she started dividing up who was using the RVs. Then I started saying, I've never seen a case where we do it so granularly.
We have, in the cases, discussed the specific uses of the property. So, for example, in the Tufts College case, where you're talking about the parking garage, you're talking about the parking garage and its connection to the library.
How did we rule in the parking garage? I've forgotten with the ultimate, that's a hard case to follow, right?
Yeah, curiously enough. So the parking garage case, the Tufts College case involved, it wasn't permitted in the specific district, the garage itself, but what's curious is that you did allow the application of the side yard setbacks. So the college said, "We only need 30 feet," or "We only want 30 feet for our side yard setback." Medford said, "No, you need 50." What was curious in that case is that the court said there was no showing that there was a financial reason, a cost, that interfered with the use of the property for education, and therefore, if the 50-yard setback was applied, and therefore, the 50-yard setback applied. In this case, we've had a trial, and the court found evidence that the primary and dominant purpose of this RV park was to save money.
No, she doesn't do that. She finds the primary purpose for, she divides it into three things at the end.
Yeah.
And she finds that two of them are religious-based, two of them are part of the mission, and one isn't. But that just doesn't work, does it? It's got to be all three, or it's got to be one way or the other. Either it's a financial move, or it's a religious move. It can't be, it can't be two-thirds religious and one-third financial, can it? That's just, that's got to be wrong for the reasons that Reba states, right?
First, the finding was different. She found that the use of the property to house volunteers was not religious. That was financial. Secondly, she found that the housing of seasonal staff at the RV park was financial, not religious.
No, she, doesn't she find that two of them are religi, she finds two of them meet the requirements, right? I mean, I had trouble figuring out exactly what she did at the end, but she finds two of them are basically necessary to run this religi, religious mission camp. The, housing your students there and housing your staff there are fine. It's the volunteers, she decides, is purely financial.
It's-
But she doesn't even do that, you know?
Trial Court finding 47, paragraph 47, "The primary purpose of the volunteer component of the RV camp is to save money."
I agree with that.
Then trial court-
How about the other two parts?
Trial Court finding, paragraph 49, "The primary purpose of the seasonal staff component of the RV camp is to save money."
But then she, doesn't she go on and say that it, it's say, it's necessary because they're losing money and therefore, it's part of the religious mission?
No, Your Honor. In fact, what she's talking about, she's, she accepts that the volunteers provide a service. The volunteers, again, let's, let's go back to, these volunteers have no obligation to take part in any religious activity at the camp. They are not required to sign any statement of belief. They are not required to have any religious belief at all. What they are doing for the camp is building Adirondack chairs and doing raking and planting-
Well, can I ask you what our, as we're looking at this, what our factual predicate is? Because the argument on the other side, that it's not financial, but that it's religious, relates to financial, which is to run these overnight camps costs a fortune, and they can't do their religious mission without the volunteers. There'd be no camp without them. So, first of all, how does that relate to what happened at trial and findings? How does that fit in with your argument?
So there's two different aspects that I want us to keep in mind here, one of which is the necessity of volunteers, and the other is the necessity of housing those volunteers-
They say it's inextricably intertwined, because it, I'm not saying that they're right, but let's let them have their, and I'm not saying what happened at the trial reflects this, but they're saying it's inextricably intertwined. We can't afford to get the volunteers. And also, this is why they come. It works for them. This attracts volunteers, and it gives us a chance to preach to them about conversion. So why is that, that wrong, based on the trial and based on the argument?
Couple of things, if I can address the second one first, which is, yes, they can proselytize to nonbelievers, who are the volunteers. That doesn't mean that's the primary or dominant purpose of the RV camp. Second, there was absolutely no evidence at the trial that the RV park was necessary to obtain volunteers. To the contrary, Mr. Zablowski testified that he has lots of people who want to volunteer. That has not been an impediment to the institution, to this camp existing.
Can I ask you, I'm sorry to interrupt, I know you're in the middle of answering questions, but back to Justice Kafka's question, which I think he may have had backwards. I think two parts of the RV camp were, were financial, one part was actually religious, the family camp. So how, as a practical matter, is that to be implemented?
You can look at it one of two ways, one of which is you look at it collectively, as I think the justice was, was alluding to. Collectively, the prominent and, the, the primary and dominant portion of this RV camp is to provide housing to anybody, whether it's the seasonal staff, the volunteers, or people-
But let's just say we disagree with you, and we agree with the finder of fact who said, "At least for the family camp, the primary purpose is religious." Then what do we do?
Then you can look collectively at the primary and dominant purpose of the RV camp altogether. Remember, what they're going to be-
But two out of three means no dice?
Two out of three means no dice.
Why?
I would say, because that's therefore not the primary and dominant purpose of the RV camp.
Because 66% of the residents are financially based, and, you know, a third is for the families who want to practice the religion as a family?
That is not different from the judgment that this court has made and other appellate courts have made when looking at the use of property for religious purposes. They make a distinction in the cases, the Collins case, although it's not an appellate case, is one indeed, where they're looking at any financial benefit. If, if you take your, your reasoning, any financial benefit to a religious institution would be entitled to protection under the Dover Amendment. That is not what the case is saying.
Well, that's not, that's not necessarily true, because in those other cases, you have instances where you have third parties that are, that are operating things, that we talk about, that there's no oversight from the religious organization to members is operating the, whatever is generating the income. But this is, this is different. This is different. This is, they're, they're operating this, and, you know, I'm still struggling with, I think Reba makes a very good point here, but if we zoom out here and look collectively at the RV park, they've already testified that they don't generate enough income to run the thing. They've got to get some support from the National Hume Organization. You've already told us about that there are very few residents in Monterey, so they have all of these things now where, where, where they're trying to run this park that is predicated on the religious experience with nature, integrating the two. So now they're, they've devised this plan to have people come to this RV park, whether it's families or volunteers, to help the overarching, overall mission of Hume. How, how is that not protected?
A couple of things. I want to make it clear, it doesn't matter who is operating the RV park, or, or whether the, as was suggested in the Amicus brief, which I think is, is just absolutely off-base. Look at the Christian Communications case, where you're talking about, they were operating a radio tower, and four hours was going to be directed to religious proselytizing, 18 hours total. And the court said in that case, "No, that is not predominantly primarily a religious use." Let's look at-
How about LaSalle?
Right.
How about LaSalle?
So LaSalle was interesting. It does indeed find that, it, it looks at all of the particular uses of the property, whether it's the welcome center, or the safe house, or the, the maintenance shed. It does indeed look granularly at the use of the property to determine what is religiously based, what is predominantly religiously based, and what isn't. And what's curious in that case is they did not find that everything, because it's owned property by the religious institution, that therefore, it's all going to be religious. They did say, "No, some of this you're allowing to use for secular uses. Perhaps it would have qualified under a different clause for tax exemption, but it doesn't fall under clause 11." What's, one of the cases it's, that you might-
I thought LaSalle was the univers, I thought LaSalle's the university case where it's, they, they consider it more to be a nursing home or something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of LaSalle. I was mixing them up.
Because in that case, they, in LaSalle, they analyzed things as a whole, and they said, "Okay, this really isn't an educational institution, it's really a nursing home," or-
Yes, exactly.
An elderly housing area.
Exactly. And you can look and go back to your Regis College case.
But isn't that what we're supposed to do here?
Well, no, because you're looking specifically at the use, again, to go back to the Tufts College case, we agree, Tufts College is an educational institution. They looked at the parking garage, specifically because that is the structure that was not permitted under zoning and had certain setbacks that had to be met. Here, it's not the camp itself that is in question, it is the-
But you can't have a camp without housing, and you don't have enough housing in the camp, so it's a chicken and egg thing.
Well, that wasn't actually found, and that was the basis-
Well, that's true or not, that's not backed up in the record. That's what you said in response to my question about-
It's not in the record, correct. The court, that, you will find that is Hume's argument, and that is what they put in their application to the Planning Board, but that is not what was found by the trial court. The trial court found that in fact, there, this was for financial reasons. You're going to put the volunteers there in this quid pro quo, which you've heard about today, in a wholly different context, but the, the fact is, there are more than enough volunteers there already. There is no finding that this is necessary in order to get volunteers. It is the volunteers that are necessary for running the camp.
But counsel, to the, to the extent we have to examine that, or examine that in the future, or you have to examine that in the future, aren't we unnecessarily getting entangled at this point with the relig, with decisions of the religious organization?
Boy, you know, unfortunately, I think that is hard to avoid in any of these cases. Let's look at the Timothy Hill case, the, the trial court case, that found that a Christian camp was indeed a religious use. Here, what's curious in that case, and which I struggled with when I read it, is it talked about the camp is also used by secular organizations. What was missing in that analysis is the weighing between the two. How much are they renting out for weddings and, and family gatherings in order to get money for the religious group, as opposed to using it for a religious camp?
So you're saying they didn't do the balancing there? And so how did they come out? I forget.
Yeah, in that case, they just said, "Yes, this is a Christian camp, it's religious." They didn't have any issue in there about an RV camp. And again, we're back to, what is it that is the primary and dominant purpose of this RV camp? I submit that the court was right to find that it was primarily financial. That is, you have Mr. Zablonski, Zablowski, sorry, and Mr. Harris, the two witnesses, both saying, "We're doing this, and in return, we get all these free services that we'd otherwise have to pay for."
But I, I would, that would make sense to me if the RV camp was, they created an RV camp, and they didn't have, they didn't use it for anything related to the religious mission. They just said, "Okay, I'm going to, I got all this extra space out there, Monterey's a beautiful place, we're going to have a lot of people touring it, let's have an RV camp there, we'll collect the money from that. Those people don't work here, they don't house our kids, they just generate money for us." That to me, yes, you're right, that's primarily financial, but that isn't what this RV camp does. Everything, anybody who uses that RV camp is working, or residing, or volunteering in this place. So I find it hard to separate it out from the religious mission there. Again, if we're an RV camp to generate money because they're losing money, and the people didn't have to live there or work there, but that rather they toured the Berkshires, and they went to all the great places out in the Berkshires, that's primarily financial. But this is different, it's integrated into the mission.
What, what's integrated into the mission are the volunteers themselves, not the RV park. The RV park is simply being used for sleeping, eating, relaxing, that's where these volunteers will go.
Well, how's that different than a coffee shop at LaSalle?
So the difference for, actually, it's actually not that different, except for the fact that the coffee shop is integrated into the programmatic LaSalle offerings. The, the, it's in the same building-
My time of year and all of that.
As the video welcoming, telling them all about Our Lady of LaSalle. The, here, there's no religious activity taking place. For all that you're saying that the family camp is going to use this for contemplation, coming back after lunch by the family, there's in fact, no evidence to that. There is no evidence-
How is that different from a college dorm, though?
Again, so a college dorm, you're going to have college activities and dorms. It just, you know, they all have common rooms. They all have activities that take place here. We don't have that in an RV park. What we have is housing for these people who will go and engage in religious activities, perhaps, not the volunteers, but the other two, we'll say, engage in religious activities at the camp, not in the RV park. The, again, to go back to Regis College, what it tells us, we look at, and McLean says the same thing, you look at the primary and dominant purpose of the RV park, not the people. I'm, again, we're not challenging the faith. What we're looking at is the primary dominant use of this RV park, and it is not religious. It has no religious programming in it. It is, the camp is operating fine, there is no finding that this is necessary, providing this housing is necessary in order for the religious camp to survive.
When you say that, do you mean that the camp would, if the camp wasn't there, where would the people be? Where would they go? Where would they sleep? Where would they stay?
If the camp weren't there, or the RV park, do you mean?
The RV park.
Yeah, if the, the camp's been there for 40 years, they've never had an RV park.
Okay.
I see, my time is well over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Your Honors.
Oh, great.
May it please the court. Alexandra Glover for Hume Lake Christian Camps, Inc.
Attorney Glover, I hate to interrupt you before I know you're going to begin, but one question I don't want you to leave without answering is, assume for the sake of argument, we agree with you, what do we do with the, with the land court judge's decision? Do we just make the call and say that the, that the, that the, it issues and you can go away? What do we, what do we do with it?
Thank you, Your Honor. In this particular case, under these facts and on this record, I think this court can and, and I'd suggest should affirm the trial court as to all but, and then reverse the trial court on the primary purpose of the housing of the volunteers and the housing of the seasonal staff to be financial. Reverse the court on that position.
Is that a question of fact or a question of law? Is it supported in the record? Is, is there a finding to that effect?
Well, Your Honor, the question of the primary purpose, the land is well-established as a question of law for the court. The subsidiary fact, why is, you know, what, this is very mixed, so it's hard to separate out. So it is a question of law. I, I will just diverge from this for a moment.
Just following up on that, so you have, again, I may have it backwards, so two-thirds of it she finds one way, and one-third of it she find, two-thirds of it she finds primarily financial, and one-third primarily religious, or the other way around, but then we can say, okay, even if she found two-thirds of it financial, we could still rule that it's primarily financial?
You absolutely can, Your Honor, because it's a question of laws. What, what the court found was, and I agree with the court's findings, application of law, all the way till we hit the point that I'll, that I'll point out. The court found the primary purpose was cost. It is a question of law in both the religious and the educational cases under the Dover Amendment, as to what the primary purpose is. So this court, on this record, can see the primary purpose is not cost, and here's why. The question before the court was, what is the use of the RV park? Parenthetically, it's not just an RV park, that's what we've been calling it for shorthand, it's, it's temporary seasonal housing, it would include temporary trailers. It's not just RVs coming and going. The camp's not going to buy 12 RVs and house their seasonal staff in it. The real purpose of the RV park, and clear in the record, is seasonal housing, seasonal housing, for participants at programs and for workers at the camp, period. That is undisputed. That's what the RV park is for.
What's workers at the camp is a subsidiary finding mean? Does that include the volunteers?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, I didn't hear the first-
Does that include the volunteers? You said, "And workers at the camp."
It does, yes, Your Honor. And, and there is no meaningful distinction for Dover Amendment purposes between the seasonal staff that's hired and the temporary seasonal staff that volunteers. To go back, the Dover, excuse me, the Martin case made it clear, there's this inquiry, what is the purpose of, in that case, it's a portion of the structure. The answer is, it's part of the church, it's part of the church where worship takes place, and, and Martin said, "No further inquiry was warranted." I'd suggest here, that's the right answer, and that's where the court should have stopped. For the court then, the line the court has in the, in the decision is, each use is materially different. That's where the court went, out of the Dover Amendment analysis. The word necessary has been used here today. Martin specifically strikes the word necessary from a religious Dover Amendment analysis. The question is not whether the use is necessary, it's whether it is related to, or in furtherance of.
Well, it's primaril, there's the word primarily.
Yes, Your Honor. Which is, which is different from-
It has to be primarily something. It has to be either primarily financial or primarily religious, right?
And under the Dover Amendment, the question is whether the primary use of the land or structure is religious. The answer here is, just like a maintenance shed that's housing vehicles in, in the LaSallete case, the primary purpose of the use of the land is the Christian ministry through the camp. The housing of people who are related to the work of that Christian ministry at the camp, both people attending programs and people working at the camp, that is the primary purpose. They are related to the primary purpose of the land, so much more so than maintenance vehicles in LaSallete. I want to point out, it wasn't just religious decorations for Christmas that were housed in, in the maintenance shed. The court actually spent a lot of time talking about the fact that there were vehicles that were used by the staff. I'd say in this case that there's a side point that should be a significant concern. If the logic of the land court is followed through, then how can any nonprofit, let's say religious organization, rely on the use of volunteers if to do so is going to in any way implicate a local municipal regulation? If the court found, so the court split here and said, "Well, for the seasonal workers, the ones that are hired, the primary purpose of the use of the RV park is cost savings because you don't want to build a whole building." As to volunteers, what the court said is, the primary purpose is cost because you don't want to pay seasonal staff. Volunteers don't only come in RVs, so volunteers come in their own cars as well. Some come in RVs, and that's a nice perk that the camp would like to use to attract them, and also to accommodate them. You can't just park an IV behind the building. Hume's going to comply with the law and will not have recreational vehicles on the campus if they're not permitted to do so. But if the court's logic is followed through, why can the volunteers stay in a building that only exists under Dover Amendment protection? Every structure on the, the Hume campus in Monterey, all the new structures are there, under the auspices of the Dover Amendment pursuant to site plan review under the Monterey zoning bylaw for religious uses. There is no zoning distinction between the permanent buildings that are built and- There is no zoning distinction between the permanent buildings that are built and the temporary seasonal housing. I'd say something else about the, the temporary nature. There are other facts supporting the reason why an RV park and not a building. Now, I don't think the court should ask that question. I think that is granular. How does Hume Lake best fulfill its mission? And that extends not only to, how does it teach Christianity through a camping ministry, down to, how is it going to, sort of on a practical level, promote its, and support its mission? In, in, in the record, there is evidence, and this is addressing Your Honor's question about what should this court do? Not just that this, this argument that there's cost savings from these people, there's evidence that this is seasonal temporary housing. The camp doesn't need a permanent building at this time. This is for seasonal overflow. It is, and in fact, if I may, Mr. Zablowski, who's the camping director at the time, testified that in answer on cross-examination, isn't this all about money? It's not just about finances, it's about the mission. What the, what's the effectiveness of our mission with the number of people we have going through camp? There's all kind of issues that would ultimately determine your growth and the pace of it. It's actually programmatic. How big are they going to get? How many people can the camp accommodate? They don't need the permanent building now. That's not just about cost. It's actually about substance. And then the other issue, of course, is that to support the volunteers, you want to have the capability of them to use, to use the RV hookups. The type of particularized inquiry that the land court did in this case is exactly the type of inquiry, and that's the language, particularized inquiry, that was rejected in La Salette, and it was in direct, rejected in Martin. I, I think, to make the distinction, I don't want to talk about Tufts for a minute, because there are two parking cases that I think, I don't know what it is about parking, but there are two parking cases that I think really make this juxtaposition-
They make a lot of money, that's why.
Yeah. The first is Tufts parking garage. There's two parts to that case as it pertains to the parking garage. What's relevant to us here is that the parking garage was permitted as a component or part of the educational purpose. No, but, no one, by the way, in the record said, who's going to be, who's going to be parking that parking garage? Is it volunteers? Is it the general public? Is Tufts making money? It really wasn't the question. You have a, a large campus, you need a parking garage. The second part of that case where the court talked about cost was a completely different question. That was, once you assume or decide that this is an educational purpose, you come to the next point. Is there a reasonable dimensional regulation at issue? Yes, a front setback. Then you get to the balancing. Is it too, too expensive? Is the only issue cost? Is there a legitimate municipal inquiry as to whether or not there's a setback? I mean, in that case, cars were going to queue out into the street, people would die. So, it certainly was a legitimate concern of the town. Contrast that parking garage, and no one cares who parks in there, at least it's not in the record, with Collins, which, which is a land court case. And in Collins, what the court held was, the church has a parking lot, but they have rented it out to a completely unrelated entity, a hospital. The hospital is busing their employees back and forth. They have financial incentives, they have parking stickers. That is completely different. Has nothing to do with the religious nature of the, of the church in Collins. So-
Let me ask you if you can respond to the argument in response to my question. I said, well, isn't the volunteers necessary for the camp to be financially successful and the RV park is a way to, to attract volunteers?
Absolutely.
And, and the response to that was, there's nothing to support that in the record. What do you say in response to that?
I say two things. The first thing I would say is that that's not an inquiry the trial court should have made. Do you need the volunteers? Are they necessary? That is not-
Well, primary purpose.
The question, right. Primary purpose is to work at the camp. What's their motivation? That's entirely relevant, irrelevant. Maybe they just want exercise. That's not the issue. But to answer specifically, there is support in the record. The volunteers perform a much-needed service. In fact, one of the stipulated facts is, in retrospect, I, I contributed to that language, but was that volunteers are a critical part of the, of the financial operation of the camp. The business model.
Yeah, they don't just feel that, they're saying that you don't need the RV park to, to accomplish what you need for volunteers to be able to have the camp function.
That's correct. That's correct, Your Honor. You do not require an RV park. Again, this is a park of seasonal or temporary housing. It would include RVs, and the record is also temporary trailers and other types of temporary housing. Yeah, you, you don't need the volunteers to come in RVs, but a lot of them do. These are seniors who are retired and travel around in the summer and do volunteer at this camp and, and other religious camps, and I assume other locations as well. But they come in RVs. It would be nice to have an RV hookup for them, and it's an attraction. The flip side is, if you have a volunteer in an RV, and you don't have a hookup, and you're not permitted to have RVs on campus, then that would exclude those volunteers. What are they going to do with their RV? They can't come volunteer. Does that answer Your Honor's question? I, just in terms, for a moment, about the volunteers' motivation for being there, and whether or not it makes any difference whatsoever whether they are subscribing to Hume's religious creed and doctrine, its statement of belief, whether they are a different type of religion, or whether in fact, again, they're just there for exercise and they don't care at all. I don't think that matters at all to the inquiry as to whether the primary purpose of the temporary housing is to support and further the mission of the church, including its oper, excuse me, the camp including its operation. They're there to work at the camp. And the court found that. There's a factual finding that, that volunteers are at Hume, the court says, for a day, a week, or more, while they are working at Hume. That, that's a specific finding that the court made. The court did, in one small place, engage in what can only in my mind be described as complete speculation. And specifically, what was said was, who knows? The volunteers could even be there just for sightseeing. And maybe it's just a, a farce or something, that they come and they park up at Hume and then go, I, I don't know, go to Tanglewood or something. Not only is there no evidence whatsoever in the record for that, but there is evidence to the contrary. When asked that question, Mr. Zablowski testified that he has never heard or observed of a volunteer faking coming to work at the camp and instead going to all of the gorgeous attractions that are in southern Berkshire County. So, I, I, I have no idea where that, that came from, but it apparently was significant to the court. I, I don't think there's, the evidence is contrary to that point. If Your Honors have no more questions, I could talk about this all day, but if Your Honor said, no more questions on that point.
No, thank you.
I'd like to just address the other question and the question that this court posed, that at least from my perspective, was not part of the trial because it was stipulated. And not only was it stipulated, but the court then made very specific extensive findings about why Hume qualifies for Dover Amendment protection at all. First of all, as Your Honor knows, there's two parts for Dover Amendment protection for a religious entity.
Sure you don't want to rely on your brief on that one? You won that one already.
Thank you, Your Honor. If the court's wanted to discuss sector denomination at all.
I know you want to tell us things.
I do, Your Honor. Then I will rest on my brief on that point.